Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that all council members are present tonight. Our opening ceremony will be from Councilman Lars Northland.
Thank you, Mayor. I invite all to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
I have to look around on our special recognitions, and I can't... We don't have any scouts here?
Yeah.
Oh, you are. We invite our scouts to come up. They don't have to introduce themselves by name, though we do ask... You tell us your troop number, what you're working on tonight, and to get an idea of where you're at in the city, just what school you go to.
Okay. So, I am in Troop 1034. I'm working on the citizenship in the nation... or community, and I go to Cypress High School.
Great. Welcome. Appreciate that. And we can tell there if we looked at his hat, not Cypress. Well, I was hoping maybe some of our elected officials would come tonight, but I guess they're just elected too busy other than us.
Just the seven.
Just the seven, yeah. I think those others would take time out of that stuff up there and come and have fun with us. Okay, let's see. Next, our approval of the minutes. Before we do the January 18 Strategic Planning Minutes, there are several items that I would like to bring up in connection with that. And so, Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that. I should have done it before, but I didn't. So, if you'll go to page three of the minutes for January 18th, our strategic plan meeting, if you look down there, it starts just a single paragraph. Mayor wants to dub it a sidewalk. That was a true statement, and then Steve Buehler wanted it only accomplished, and then they put 25K new and 25 repairs. And I think actually Councilmember Buehler proposed that instead of just increasing by 25,000, that we increase it more. Was it the... instead of an additional 25, an additional 50? Or what is your recollection on that?
I do recall wanting to put more money into sidewalks, whatever we could do, and might have been the 50, 50. We seem to have a general consensus that we wanted to do more about sidewalks, which isn't really reflected in the minutes.
Yeah, and so we really...
I don't know the retail of specific dollar amount that was committed.
And I do recall that later we talked about how it should be allocated. But we put 25 to new and 25 repairs, so I think it was an additional 50,000.
That's my recollection, that it was 50,000 more than what we were doing last year.
So, one of the things we need to just correct that sentence and say that the Council supported an additional $25,000 to go to new sidewalks and $25,000 to repairs. Does that ring a bell?
Yeah, that's my memories of that.
Okay, and it just needs to kind of state that. That's kind of an incomplete statement there. Okay, then, let's see, down to page four. Let's see, down towards the bottom. Okay, there was... it's actually page five. Okay, it's the... you go to the... on page five, the second line, Wayne Powell said that while some members of the Council are not comfortable with putting this on the Council... Was that supposed to say on the campus or the...
UCCC campus.
Yes? Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. And so, if we would make that correction... And... Let's see. So, I think we got all of that, and going down to... What's the next one? Oh. Don Christiansen discussed concern over retention of our police, and there was...
The same page?
Oh, yes, that's the same page. And that's just a grammatical thing. He would discuss the concern, and we just need to make grammatical corrections. There are other grammatical corrections, so when we approve these with these corrections, it's to allow staff to go back and make those corrections. There were some spelling errors, wrong words, and grammatical issues that we just need to prove, correct.
One of the problems is many times when you're typing them as fast as we're talking, that you don't get to go back and see what the spelling correction software put in for you to not know what you really wanted to say.
Yes, discussed this. And maybe it was a spell correction, and also, let's see. Somewhere on this page as well, there was something about monuments. Can't see it now. See it on page five. What's the...
Page six. There was something about... Reviewed some place-making ideas that we could continue to pursue with respect to monuments, et cetera. Council seemed to like the idea of low... just above the next paragraph up from where we just were. Of a low NTCE type of monument.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What... I didn't understand NTCE.
Low maintenance, Mayor.
Low maintenance?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, is that a symbol for that or something?
No, I think it was just a typing.
Okay, I thought...
It's like Don was saying, and it might be good to keep in mind, too. These minutes are produced by our beloved and willing Assistant City Manager, who is doing the best he can along the lines of what I was talking about. And so, it's going to be more detailed than we'll normally see in a city minutes, but it's also going to have a lot more issues like that, so...
Well, but I wanted to reflect what we said, and I didn't...
Maintenance is what it may be.
Yeah, I didn't. I thought maybe... I just wasn't quite sure what it...
It's shorthand. They took all the vowels out.
And that's okay. Right, so if you have specific questions or corrections like that, or is it... we're glad to make...
And so, maybe just one more pass-through to kind of, you know, look at that might help. That's all. So, with that information...
With that information, I would move that we approve the minutes as amended, and that we encourage staff to go back through and see if the spell correction software did any other things to us.
And there were actually a couple others where the sentence wasn't clear, and so it might help just to verify that one more time. I mean, given how fast we go and what, you know, it's great, and I'm thrilled to have these minutes. I'm thrilled that I can go back and be reminded of the things we discussed. Just reading through them helped remind me of that. Anyway, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Now, I assumed, and I guess maybe it wasn't clear, that you included the minutes of February 5th in that?
I can. Second.
I didn't, but I can. Take another motion on February 5th.
Move to approve the minutes of February 5th. Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. Okay, next, we have our public comment period. And so, we will have that now. Couple of these have been here before. I'm not sure if Mike Rigdon, have you been here before?
Yes.
Okay, so you know the rules.
I do.
Okay, I won't go over that then. Sometimes we get new people, and they think it's time for debate. Not quite that, so... But Mr. Rigdon, why don't you come up and start, and then we'll...
Thank you.
Oh, and if you're here to speak to the public hearing on 3915 South 4400 West, that'll be a separate public hearing. But Mr. Rigdon, that's not what you're speaking on, is it?
The reason why I came here today is for three emphasis. I try to be a good citizen, and I try to let people like you to come in and represent, you know, what's good for West Valley City. And we just had a change of... at the garbage service, and it went from one company to another company. I'm not here to complain about that, but I'm here mostly because our streets are still being manipulated with vehicles that are parked. In one household, you have residents. In one residence, where I look at all these kids, and then these kids have boyfriends, and then these boyfriends have girlfriends, and grandparents, and mother-in-laws, and they all have boyfriends, and they all live in the same house, and they all park. This one house puts all their vehicles on my street. It's no wonder why we can't get any garbage people to come down our street and clean it off. Somewhere, we've got to look at... You know, we allow so many people to live in a trailer court down on 3100 South, and I don't know what west it is, but there's cars. I mean, there's so many cars parked on that street on 3100, and they can't park inside because they limit how many cars can go there. But I can't limit how many cars a household has, and I'm hoping that the city, maybe they can create a parking... Because these kids have business trucks. And, you know, on the weekend, if my family wants to come over, the whole street is covered with parking lots from businesses that these kids work for. And I can't even have my family over because my house is covered with cars all over it. And, you know, it seems to happen, and mostly the thing that bothers me is when you people go down the road, and I'm talking about you, if you see something that's not right, do you say something? I really want you to look at yourselves. How many times have you guys said something about what's happening in your neighborhood? Think about it. What's happening as you go to here for a meeting? And what do you say, and what do you do to change it? You know, I don't know how many people work for West Valley City, but can you imagine the impact that our mayor would have if he went to the city guy, manager, and says, "When was the last time you talked to your employees that if you see something, say something? You see something, say something." You know, in closing, and I don't want to take all your time, but I really do believe that there was some injustice done when Jill was shot, killed. She said something. She did something. I don't want to see our city go down because we turn an eye. There's got to be a way that we can correct all of this junky neighborhood, cars, lawns being maintained, et cetera. And I would encourage all of your employees that if they see something, that they would say something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Jim Bisac.
Thank you, Jim Bisac. I've been here several times. I wanted to let him know that there is parking enforcement now. I don't know if he's aware of that, but West Valley City does have the new parking enforcement division, and they are overwhelmed, and even by me. I'm sending them pictures, dated pictures, and emails about it, so... But he got out before that, so... You guys know why I'm here, or Mayor, you know why I'm here, Pet Ordinance. I've been told that the city manager and the city attorney are getting together or got together to put together the rough draft for to go to the study meeting. I'm hoping that it gets done. I was told two or three weeks. We're coming up on that. I missed a couple weeks, so... You know, I'm asking that it gets put on the study meeting so we can get that rolling. Other than that, it's... you know, I'll talk to the chief tomorrow in her meeting about the things that I have for her and the parking issues. You know, on the streets, I agree with what he was saying about... I have a neighbor that has the same thing. 10 cars to the house. They're the ones parking the wrong way, parking across driveways, sidewalks, and their yards, too. But I think every neighborhood has that, so that's fine.
Thank you. Next, Mike Markham.
I'm Mike Markham, 3008 West Alice Circle Way. I guess we all have the same thought pattern here tonight. First of all, I want to thank Russ and his team for taking care of the roads the best they can. Unfortunately for me, I've been down in the sunshine the last two big snowstorms, so I didn't have to deal with it. But I did make sure my sidewalks were shoveled and maintained. Couple of things I'd like to bring up is we still have a horrendous problem with parking on the streets in snowstorms. Wayne and I is working on an issue in my neighborhood of a used car lot that trying to take care of. As I came down here this morning, there's still a burgundy-colored terrace that sits out in front of this house without plates. If the city, if we call the city, they go tell them they have to move it. They don't get a citation. We love them, so they just move it on the lawn. And then, next time around, it's back on the street. We love them so much, we don't cite them. People pay attention to losing money, you know? And it's just not a... for every one car on the street, there are actually about three spots that don't get plowed because the plow has to pull out, go past the car, pull back in. But the same thing is with the street sweepers. You line it, you know, the snowplows figured into my taxes. I have to pay extra for the street sweepers. I don't like paying for something that's we're not getting. It's just like Summit County. I have no say up there. I have to pay the taxes, but I don't can't... I can't vote for anybody. You know, so I'm being billed for something that we can't get done in our neighborhood. I think we need to step up. We're getting the reputation out here that people can do whatever they please to do, and we're so shorthanded that we can't take care of these issues. I don't know what it's going to take. I think if the plow pulls up behind these vehicles and packs the snow in, turns around and packs it into the grill... Of course, some of these cars have been sitting there in the same place all year. You can see where they've been plowed around and never moved, and never moved, and sit there. You know, in the summertime, a spider web's coming down off of the axles. So, you know, I don't know. And what do we do with parking of bike lanes? Is there an ordinance against parking in bike lanes? 4100 South, there in front of... just east of 3200, there's a bunch of little houses with some nice new bike lanes that was painted in there, but the people park on top of the bike lanes, and some of them have to plow around. So, as long as we... as everybody here is happy with the reputation that we're getting, that we'll take anything that people can throw at us, I guess we all have to suck it up. You know, I'm not going anyplace because I can't afford to move. Just to change the other side of town, I gotta spend another $100,000 just to replace what I've got. Something else I'd like to talk to is, and I believe Salt Lake City came up with this, if we have a structure that's been abandoned or not used for 12 months or something like that, it's been boarded up, and it can't be rented out readily, why doesn't it have to be demolished and landscaped? We've got the old David Early building across the street here. Nobody wants to go in there. All the... I've been told, because the Big O store wanted to go there, but it doesn't fit into our master plan, that... Plus, now all the copper's been gutted out of it. Like, we require, I think it's Firestone that owns that, to tear it down, to clean it up. We've got houses that sit around, and some of them are the city's houses. Need to go in, they need to be torn down instead of boarded up. It just brings crime. We need to get... we need to quit being such, I hate to say this, but such nice people to people that don't care, and we need to start worrying about the people that do care. You know, there's a lot of people out there that really care, and there's a lot of people out there that don't care. But it seems like the don't care people get more attention. You know, we worry about stepping on their rights. We worry about this, we worry about that. But what about the rights of the people that care? You know, I don't... I don't understand your reluctance to step up and take care of the people that care in this city. Just like they were saying, I've got a house up the street for me that will have four cars in the driveway and six lined up in the street that people have... And they're so smart, they park right across the street from each other. They park right in front of a walkway that comes from Valley Junior High, which is probably a safety issue. But my five minutes are up, and I'll just keep standing up here until we can see some changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that's going to speak, wanted to share with us?
I want to say Mayor.
Come forward, and please state your name and your contact information.
Hey, Mayor. So, I've been here before. My name is Vin Nguyen. My address is 3399 South 530 West, West Valley City. So, you know, I just want to reaffirm my support for the Pet Ordinance. Also, I did hear a few, you know, great people here comment about the parking. Yeah, I've seen some houses with plenty amount of cars. I just want to... You know, it is... it can't... it is an issue in some neighborhoods, but I want to be clear, like, although I'm supporting for a change in a positive way, got to be really careful how we tread on this because, you know, the moment you start telling people, like, hey, you can only have so many residents in your household and things like that, that's a really, really iffy issue. And then also, I've been cited before, like I mentioned before. This parking enforcement thing got me for something that I felt was very trivial. I wasn't committing any of the issues that these great members were talking about, and they cited me. So, I always thought, you know, why is it that I'm being singled out and everybody else, you know, commits way worse? But in any event, if we're going to start even restricting parking even more, that's going to be really, really hard to do and care because, like I mentioned before, with how my house is oriented and how I have to park. If there's any restrictions on parking on the street, I'm going to have to start parking my car in like a grocery store or something because I don't have a choice. Or maybe if the city can create like a... maybe like a parking garage or something that we could utilize. But I mean, I can only really park two cars in front of my, like, in my driveway, and then, you know, the other cars have to be on the street, so... You know, I think most households have more than two. So, I'm just saying, if we do some sort of change to take that into consideration with the whole parking thing. But yeah, I mean, some households get really out of hand. I mean, like, you know, I've seen houses with like 10 cars and stuff. I understand that. I mean, but, you know, rather than saying, you know, you're, you know, just start throwing fines left and right, maybe start helping people give them alternative places they can park that is good for everybody in the neighborhood while not necessarily punishing everybody that lives in that residence. But yeah, and I really appreciate your time. I know you guys have a very hard job to do. You always have to look at everybody's concerns, and every time there's a change made in the city, a lot of work, a lot of, you know, studying and consideration gets put into it. So, I definitely really appreciate your efforts on, you know, whatever issues that we bring to your attention. So, thank you so much for your time, and I hope that you have a great rest of your week. And we have President's Day holiday next week, so wishing the best for everyone here as well.
Thank you. Is that everyone? Looks like it is, so with that, we'll turn now from our public comments to see if our city manager has any comments tonight?
No, thanks, Mayor.
Council members have any? Okay, well, I will just mention two items, just for information. It was mentioned, do we speak up? And I would say that unfortunately, the gentleman left, but that's pretty routine for us because we do... Not only do we see things, but people call us and say, please bring things up, so... That's just kind of our process. Just an interesting note, and not to debate the issue, but the state is actually, let's see, Senate Bill 34, which is the Affordable Housing Amendments, puts requirements on cities to meet certain requirements, and it's a menu, but interestingly enough, one of those is restricting parking in order to encourage people to use public transit. So, I just thought that was interesting, to reduce the amount of parking and things like that. And so, I just offer that as a contrast. I would mention that the state often requires us to do things. So, we'll see how that one turns out. Let's see, then, I'm just looking down through these. There was a new one, the animal control one is in process. Parking, we've done, but the dilapidated buildings. Let's have a... put that on our agenda for next study meeting. I don't know what we can do, if anything, but at least we'll talk about it because that's new. With that, then, we'll go to our... the rest of our agenda. We have a public hearing on application SMI-4-2018 filed by Gary Hutchings, final plan approval for Brittany Down subdivision. This is Lot 27, located at 3915 South 44 West. By the way, I'm doing much better with my voice tonight. This is a property, a large property, which they're going to put down in, and are dividing that into two lots, meets all the requirements for that, has submitted that request to the Council. And so, the home that is currently on that larger piece of property will stay there, and then a second home will be built with the division of the property into two pieces. That's enough explanation, then we will also consider Ordinance 1905 for that same Lot 27. we will also consider ordinance 1905 for that same Lot 27. So with that introduction then, we will open public input on this request. Is there anyone here to speak to this issue? So other than staff, there are seven people here and none of them want to speak to it. Seeing that, then we will close public input. We will bring it back to the council for a motion, for discussion or for comment.
I move for, for the ordinance 19-05.
Second. Property force, any further comments? Seeing none, then to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Piti Samanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I was just thinking, I discovered a new meaning of the word horse whisperer this last week. It was me, I don't own a horse. I lost my voice last week almost completely. And Councilman Bueller was, was nice to, even though I was here, to become the voice of the council and chair of the council for a while, which was much appreciated. So anyway, moving on to resolutions, we have resolution 19-21. This is a maintenance agreement between ourselves and UDOT, the UDOT Department of Transportation. We have put up, are putting, going to put up some wind art installations similar to what's here at the city building and a couple of places around the city. One of those places that we've selected is actually on land owned by UDOT. However, if we put it in, they don't want to take care of it. And so the agreement is that if we sign this maintenance agreement with them, that we will take care of it. They will give us permission to put it there. And so that's on 3500 South. With that introduction then, to the council for any further comments or motions?
I would move for approval of resolution 19-12.
Second. Property force, any further comments? This, by the way, is part of a greater plan. We've actually selected three different sites in order to, because we've been using that as kind of a, you know, theme for art here in our city. So we're going to add that in several different locations across the city. But this one requires some special action apart from that. With that then, we'll go to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Piti Samanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next we have resolution 19-13. This is to authorize the city to purchase an asphalt paver from Kate Equipment. Let's see, we're replacing one of our two asphalt pavers. They're actually pretty old. This will replace the 2008 paver. And this one is actually a much better quality. Electrically heated screed instead of propane heated. Now, that may not mean a lot to you, but it makes for a better process, less fumes and getting things laid down, so easier cleaning and maintenance as well. The cost will be $149,460 will come from the Class C road funds. That is the issue before us to the council.
I move for approval of resolution 19-13.
Seeing no further comments, we will go to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Piti Samanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And probably for our scouts benefit, it may seem like we're moving pretty quickly and not discussing or asking questions. This is the second time the council has dealt with these issues. Last week at our study meeting, we went through these with discussions and examples and presentations. So now it's, sometimes these are controversial, but most of them are pretty routine. This stuff we do all the time, so. With that then, we go to resolution 19-14. An agreement between West Valley City and Salt Lake County for landfill pricing. This is an interesting one. We have to pay to dispose of the garbage that we have picked up, the company that does it, but we have received an opportunity because the Salt Lake Valley landfill for the next few months has reduced the cost. It will save the city approximately $55,000 to enter in this agreement with them. And so for the first six months of 2019, we have to do at least 20,000 tons and we should easily meet that. So that's the agreement that's before us to the council.
So dump all your garbage now, lots chief. Move for approval of resolution 19-14.
Second. Okay. Seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Piti Samanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next we go to our new business item nine on our agenda. Consider application S14-2018 filed by our city. This is for final plan approval on city-owned property at West Valley Parks Operations, 6750 West Parkway Boulevard. Now, this is actually property we own and what we're doing now will be a building built there and some other improvements made. This will divide it into two pieces. One will be used to house office and maintenance facilities. Lot two will remain undeveloped. And of course, we have to go through the process too when we want to, you know, subdivide our property, so it's before us here. And that's probably all I need to say on that. Unless someone wants to add to it, so to the council.
Move for approval of application S-14-2018.
Property before us, seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Piti Samanu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The last item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Usually we have multiple of these, but tonight we only had one. Very routine item. Again, a easement purchase agreement for a perpetual easement, temporary construction easement. This is for work being done along 2700 West. This is actually the street address of the property owner is on South Lee Mauer Street. So we've done many of these before. We got another one here, so. To the council.
Move for approval of resolution 19-15.
Second. I was just about to say that maybe it wasn't quite so routine, but we got to it. See no further discussion to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Piti Samanu.
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes our agenda. We thank those of you who came tonight. It's always nice to have people here. This is actually a good turnout. And we always usually have some scouts. If we have more turnout, it's usually scouts, so. So we do appreciate those who come and especially those who share their comments. With that then, last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Our motion to adjourn passed unanimously. We are adjourned until next.